All right, let's get this started this evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Zoning Commission Hearing. We normally start out with me walking through the procedures for the meeting this evening, so we'll start out that way and then, so we're all on the same page and we get going. So, good evening, this is the regularly scheduled April 25th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those audience, I'm joined by Rebecca Holman, Michael Slifka, Adam Miskiel, Tim Moran, Evan, John Mead, Attorney Scott Footson, Community Director, Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Mike Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Planning and Zoning Commission meetings air live on Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, MetroNet Channel 93, or the city's YouTube channel. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing for Agenda 5A. The Chairman of tonight's meeting will guide the public applicants and Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and brief overview of their requests. Commission members will first have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called upon and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name, it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer questions or respond to any comments made from members of the public. Any additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed by the Commission deliberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so consider yourself sworn in. In order to help the quality of the meeting broadcast, I remind all Commissioners to mute themselves except when addressing the Commission. Commissioners are encouraged to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist the record keepers. For example, Stocking, yea, nay, or stay. Okay? Any questions at this point? Pretty straightforward? All right, Hannah, please call the roll.
Mead?
Mead here.
Evans?
Evans here.
Slifka?
Slifka here.
Holloman?
Holloman here.
Mataskill?
Mataskill here.
Moran?
Moran here.
Stocking?
Stocking here. Next item is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve? Evans?
Stocking, Slifka.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Next item is approval of minutes of the April 11th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have two changes.
Any?
On Pages seven and 10, there's a reference to Phil Passo. It's actually Phil Page, who's a former city administrator, so we might want to make that change.
Do you want to look at what? We have to make a motion in a second on that.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the minutes. On Page seven and 10 of the minutes where it says Phil Passo, P-A-S-O, it should say Phil Page, P-A-G-E.
Move second in all favor?
Aye.
Post? Any other changes? Okay, very good. All right, so at this point, we'll go into the public hearing item. It's a 320 River PUD, it's a request and preliminary. Oh. Oh, we just do the whole thing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the...
Yes.
As amended.
As amended. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. All right. I was wondering, why should I have done that? Okay. So, we'll now move on to the public hearing 5A. It's 302 River PUD, it's a request and a preliminary and final plat of subdivision and a preliminary and final planned unit development for 126-unit residential development. The applicant is Benchmark Developers. The location is all property bounded by Stevens Street, Ford Street, and North River Lane, and North First Street. Okay, Matt, thanks for the record this evening.
All righty, so the contents of this file include an application for a preliminary and final planned unit development and a preliminary and final plat of subdivision filed by Benchmark Developers dated June 28th, 2023. Includes the following items: the project narrative, the legal description, owner authorization letter, development schedule, list of variations, traffic impact analysis, Kane County Road Improvement Fee Application, the land use opinion application, preliminary and final plat of PUD and subdivision, architectural drawings, preliminary engineering plans, preliminary landscape plan, tree preservation plan, site lighting and photometric plan, stormwater permit application, the existing and proposed drainage plan, the overflow weir exhibit, land and cash worksheet, fire truck turning exhibit, the geotechnical report, correspondence with COMEd, sanitary capacity calculation exhibit, stormwater management report, the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and the affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on April 10th, 2024, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, a copy of the February 21st, 2024 Historic Preservation Commission Meeting Minutes, all written public comment received before 5:00 PM, April 25th, 2024, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated April 25th, 2024, with the following addendum. And we have one addendum here to the report. It reads the following: "Per Section 11-10A-9-C of the zoning ordinance, the applicant is requesting to provide a cash contribution to the City Tree Bank Fund as the site is insufficient in size to plant the required number of replacement trees. The tree preservation ordinance requires a total of 419 replacement tree inches to be provided. The applicant submitted tree preservation survey, notes 57 replacement trees provided, but this does not take into consideration all of the trees proposed in the landscape plan. The total number of trees proposed is 64 at a 3-inch caliper, which comes to a total of 192 replacement inches. Based on the three-year average of the retail cost for the least expensive tree on the city's recommended tree list, which is $277, staff has calculated the total required cash contribution to be $25,151.60. City staff recommends a sixth condition to be added for city council consideration and states the following: It would be Condition 6. The applicant shall provide a cash contribution to the City Tree Bank Fund in the amount of $25,151.60 at the time of plat recordation."
All right, very good. Thank you, Matt. We'll hear from the applicant at this time.
Thank you all. My name is Anthony Picararo with Benchmark Developers. I'm obviously the developer of the proposed project. Obviously, we are very excited to be here today to present to you 302 River. It's a very exciting development for us that's going to be located on the former Geneva Bottle Works facility. The project represents an exciting opportunity to transform this historic but a little bit dilapidated site into a vibrant residential community that we will integrate with the surrounding areas. To begin, I have here our team, our design team, Aleni Picararo and Ken Dolsky with KNA Architecture, Ryan Blocker with Jacob and Hefner Associates, Brendan May with KLOA, Gary Weber, they're not here, and of course, my dad and my partner, Ben Picararo, a couple more gray hairs than I have. But yes. Collectively, we are a very experienced group, many different industries, but Benchmark in particularly, we specialize in multifamily residential developments and, excuse me, guys, I'm coming down with a little bit of a cold, so I apologize if I'm trying to catch my cough here every couple of seconds. We specialize in multifamily developments and premium locations such as this. We typically look for TOD or commuter sites in downtown areas, and this obviously meets that requirement. For each development, Benchmark, we act as designers, conceptual and final designers. We also build our own developments as general contractors. We at times self-perform for certain trades when necessary. We ultimately are the owners of these developments and operators of these developments, so we are in these projects from start to finish, and we have a hand in every part of it. So, the location, I think we kind of already most likely know the location, but we are, of course, bound by First Street to the west, River Lane, and Fox River to the east, Stevens Street to the north, and Ford Street to the south. It, of course, falls within the Geneva Historic District, and, you know, just for a little background, for those of you familiar, this is important to us, is one of our underwriting items for identifying sites that are unique for us. It's a 76-walkable score, 83-bikable score, so that's a score out of 100 that essentially rates the property based on how many errands you could do on a daily basis by walking or bike, so this obviously has a lot of shops that are nearby that you could do from the site. Another obvious item that we are near is the Union Pacific West Line, which is 0.7 miles away, which is roughly an 18-minute walk from the site, which is important for our residents who commute to the city. And of course, our greatest asset is obviously the Fox River, so not only for its views, but for its amenities and beauty for the building. We also are attracted to all the parks nearby, Wheeler Park, Island Park, River Park, and the Fox River Bike Trail. So it is a very attractive site for us, and it is premium for us. The proposed development does, in our... I'm sorry, skipping ahead a little bit. So, the executive summary, so the proposed project, 302 River, which obviously is at the former Geneva Bottling Works facility adjacent to Fox River, includes 126 market-rate luxury apartment buildings, units, 12 of which are townhome rentals with three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. The rest are a mix between studios, ones, and two-bedroom units. Our building is a luxury upscale development and will have affluent tenants... Excuse me. We're going to be offering on our first-floor lobby workstations, dogwash station, obviously mail parcel and package room, laundry, and dry cleaning drop-off. On our second floor, we'll have a golf simulator along with a fitness center, a cafe lounge area, and then an over 6,000-square-foot roof deck, which tenants will be able to use, lounge on, hang out, grill, and obviously enjoy the view of Fox River. So, the current use are a mix between single-family homes and some vacant/underutilized warehouses and industrial buildings. So, from north going south is 327 North First Street, which is a single-family home, which is essentially used as a multifamily home at this point, 311 North First Street, 305 North First Street, and 301 North First Street. So all of these homes would be demolished except for 305 North First Street, which we are proposing to relocate on-site and repurpose as our manager's office and leasing office. We would be remodeling it per the historic guidelines as well. This was in response to some strong feedback from the historical preservation that we were not maybe making enough effort to preserve some of the homes on the property. On the east side of the property, there's a vacant warehouse in the northeast and the former Geneva Bottling Works facility in this area as well. The rest is our demolished buildings and parking lots, and this is the former railroad spur, I believe it's called, the Sugar Line. Pardon me if I didn't get that name right, but... So this is just an aerial, so you can see the state of the current properties out there. This is heavily wooded area, is the former railroad spur with some overgrown landscape, of course. This is 301 North First Street, 305, which is the home that we would be relocating to be our manager's office and updating and repurposing, 311 and 327. So this is our site plan and landscaping plan. On the east side of the property are our two six-unit townhome buildings. These townhome buildings are going to attract small, younger families, which is not always an option for rental developments of this nature. We obviously have, like I said earlier, studios, one-bedrooms, and two-bedroom units, which typically attract young professionals, young couples, empty nesters. We often get empty nesters who have a home in Florida but need something nearby or back home where they can come visit their family, and that would obviously be more likely in our apartment building. At the southeast corner of the property is where we're going to be relocating the 305 North River Street for our leasing office, and then, of course, this is our five-story apartment building. In the middle of the building is our roof deck, which overlooks Fox River, and there's some private terraces next to it on that floor as well. The main entrance of the building is at the southeast corner here. This is where they would be entering into most of those amenities that we discussed. In between the townhomes and the apartment building is a parking lot, which is for tenants and their guests. So there's 25 of them located here. We have another 20... Is it one? 21 parking space along the front of the building, along River Lane. This is also dedicated for tenants and their guests. Additionally, we are providing 22 public spaces. This is public property. We are improving this green space here along the riverfront with some landscaping, plantings, parking lot, of course, or parking spaces, I should say. We're burying most of the power lines that are located going north-south along River Lane. These are mostly secondary lines. There's also a big tower, which would not be buried. That's a little unfeasible for a project of this size. And then, of course, this is our landscaping plan showing most of our plantings and the trees that we are trying to replant. Unfortunately, as you can tell, there's not really much space to plant anything more than what we already have. Excuse me. So, I'm going to kind of touch base on most of the variances that we have in here. The one that I don't have is the tree preservation. I only found out about that a couple hours ago, but the max building height of this site, Lot 2 specifically, which is for our apartment building, is 50 feet. Our building is proposed to be 53 feet, which is not significantly higher than the proposed... I'm sorry, than the maximum. That's measured from the middle... I'm sorry, from the average of the rear of the building, which is 48 feet, and the front of the building, which is 58 feet. This is a little reverse. This is River Lane here, so this is our section, our cut section of the building and the townhomes in a reverse image from this one. So this would be the figure from the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, the downtown station area master plan cross-section. So this is a figure that the city, along with third-party consultants, came up with as an opportunity or suggestion to improve this parcel. They identified this as a parcel that should be improved and would help the community. There is a little error in this figure. They're saying that First Street is at 702 feet elevation. In reality, that's more like 706, 707. That report does strongly prefer that First Street's character and scale remain as it is and not be overimputed. So most of the measurements and recommendations come based off of First Street. They're actually... It's hard to read, but they recommend that the maximum height measured from First Street is 34 feet. Our townhomes are actually 34 feet from First Street. Our apartment building is 37 feet when measured from First Street. So we are very close to what the master plan actually is proposing. The max elevation, if it was 34 feet from First Street, would be 740. We are proposing 742.5, so very close. These are a little bit of comparison heights to the neighboring properties. These are not necessarily to scale width-wise, but height-wise, they are correct. This is the First Street Town Row Homes just to the north of us. Again, this is a little hard to read here, but these townhomes are 38'6 tall when measured from First Street. Ours are, again, 34-foot townhomes, 37-foot in the apartment building. Most of... This is the view from First Street looking east at our development. Most of our townhomes are actually brushing or covering the apartment building in the back. So this development actually is slightly taller than both of our buildings. I'm sorry, I have this reversed. So, the First Street Row Homes are 34'6, so these are 6 inches taller than our townhomes and 2 foot lower than the apartment building. The Park Place Townhomes is my mistake, are the ones that are a little bit taller, they're 38'6. They are taller than our townhomes and taller than our apartment building. And these are the townhomes that are located just northwest of us, if you can see my cursor, which is this corner, and the First Street Row Homes are just north of us in this corner. Another one of our variation requests is lot coverage. Lot 2's coverage is the point of conversation here. We're proposing 83% lot coverage on Lot 2. This development is... We are proposing to split this into two different properties, so Lot 1 being the apartment building, Lot 2 being the townhome building, mostly because of the zoning designation difference between the two properties. Excuse me. Yes, we are proposing 83% lot coverage, but most of the... That is due to us looking to maximize the first-floor parking garage of this building. We're trying to get as many parking spaces as possible in one floor so that we don't need a second floor or additional parking lots on the outside of the building to make this building any taller. So to offset or to compensate for the lot coverage overage here, we're proposing a 50% lot coverage on the second lot, Lot 1, for the townhomes. So the maximum lot coverage for Lot 1 is actually 65%. We're proposing 50. We're proposing 83% versus 70. If we average them out, we're proposing 66.7% versus averaging out the lot coverages, maximum lot coverages, so we would be under 67.5 if we're averaging. You know, I think it's important to look at the development as a whole, not necessarily just one piece and separate them into two, because it is one development. Excuse me. Street yard setback. So the zoning code requires that the setback along the front street, which would be River Lane in this case, is 10 feet. We're proposing 0 feet, but that 0 feet is really just our parking. Our building is actually set back 24 feet. If you look here, the existing building is actually set on the property line. We're going to be 20 feet back, which would probably be somewhere around here. This is also playing into our other variance request in the rear yard setback of 0 feet because we are pushing the building as far back as possible to accommodate some of these parking spots along the front. Again, it's, in my opinion, a little bit of a technicality that we're measuring to the parking spaces instead of the building, so it's, I guess, take with it what you'd Maximum principal structures, we are proposing three buildings on Lot 2. We are combining about five or six different pins into Lot 2, which are the four homes and the railroad spur, so five, actually. So we're combining these into one pin, and now we have three structures on one lot. So, again, they are primary structures, but again, we should be looking at this as a master PUD more than anything else, in my opinion. I don't want to reiterate too much of what I said earlier, but these are just some renderings of the building. One thing that I would like to note here, development, we feel, is a much-needed apartment building and development for Geneva. Some reports that we do have have seen that some of the retail vacancy has increased in Geneva, including in the downtown area. We feel that this development would definitely help spur some of the economy in downtown, not that it's bad, but it can help, adding 126 units. I don't know the count of beds at this point, but that's a lot of affluent individuals that are going to be shopping in the neighborhood and contributing. We are bringing a large investment to this neighborhood, and we hope that it's appreciated and looked well upon. And we are also bringing high-quality jobs, some temporary, and many permanent as well. There is a need for a luxury rental option in this community. There's not a ton of option as far as rental in general in Geneva. There are a lot of for-sale developments. You know, for somebody who's downsizing or somebody who needs a home in between, there's a need in Geneva, and we feel like we're providing that need. Again, thank you all for your time. I'll open you guys up to some questions.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, Tim?
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. With regard to the five-story apartment building, I assume there's going to be elevators in the building?
Correct.
Two elevators, okay. Once it's developed, are you going to keep it and manage it, or do you expect to sell it?
We typically keep and manage these buildings, and we do sometimes sell the buildings, depending on our situation, if we have many other developments, if we are in need of cash, but we typically intend to plan and hold on to this building.
But you're figuring a professional management company, or you do that yourselves?
We also self-manage our developments as well.
Okay.
And we have a team. It's not just me, but yes, we do self-manage, yes.
With regard to the parking, and this really has to do with the apartment building, are there... Is it communal parking, or do the tenants have to pay an additional fee to use the parking garage or spaces on-site?
So, the parking spaces in the garage, we typically do charge a small fee for indoor parking. We have free parking on the exterior, but that does get used up. There's obviously not enough spaces for the tenants outside. So yes, there is a small fee that we do charge for the parking garage, but it is solely for the building itself.
Okay. And the reason I ask is that if it's... My kids live in the city, and parking is very expensive, and what I would not like to see is that it's so expensive, they try and park on the street. Because if you go to the condo to the south, down on Peyton Street there, there's a couple of parking spots, but it gets pretty tough in terms of traffic flow during the day. I'll stop here. That's all I had for now.
All right, thank you, David. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. I also have a few questions. For the house that you intend to relocate and turn into your sales office, I know there was some information in the packet about that having been owned by a significant individual, I believe, but I wondered, in looking at them, that didn't strike me as the... I wondered why that one, rather than the one that's on the corner as it is. I mean, it didn't look like that one was particularly interesting as compared to the others.
So, the historic preservation, and again, I'm not going to speak for them, but we did get a lot of feedback on each home in particular. There was a lot of pushback on this home in particular, just because I believe it was the oldest. It was built by a carpenter, William Berman, I think is his name. There's a lot of historical significance to it, and I believe some of his family owned one or two of the other homes as well. So that was the reason behind selecting that home. We wanted to make sure that it was the one with the most historical significance, not necessarily the one with the most historical significance. necessarily the one with the most architectural appeal, because we are going to be, we are going to be improving the homes and, and modifying it and updating it as well, so.
And is this a permanent use as your sales office, or is it temporary during your initial lease-up? And if so, what is the long-term use of that building?
So, it would be a permanent use. During lease-up, it would be simply just for our leasing, as our leasing office. We may turn it into, you know, further amenities for the building where tenants can rent out the space or, or of some sort, but it will stay a part of the development.
Getting to the parking, you've got public spaces along the riverfront. I was wondering, the city staff can maybe comment on this, too. I know that sometimes there is a need during festivals especially, or on Friday nights or whatever in the summer, to have that additional parking would be nice, the lot behind the restaurants and all that becomes full. But in general, I was wondering if that was the best use of that area, or would we be better to create a nicer public experience there by having more space and not having it primarily being a strip of parking? I wasn't impressed with what that area was going to be as far as additional benefit to the public. It just didn't look very interesting.
We're open to suggestions. We, we always, we typically get pushback on parking, even though we are meeting requirements of parking. We wanted to offer a little bit more than what we felt was, was needed. There's always spillover, you know, but, you know, in this building in particular, we, we probably have a little bit more than we need in general. Really, what we intended was to continue River Park, which is just south. That also has parking. That was more of the intent, is to kind of continue the look and feel of River Park, just go extend it a little bit further north. Those actually have angled parking. We have straight perpendiculars. So, you know, we're open to recommendations and suggestions on how to use it better, if you guys feel that there's a better way, so.
To Tim's comment, does this provide a very tempting place for residents to park and avoid paying a fee for a space?
So, we, we don't, we typically manage, and, and, you know, I can't say that we're watching like a hawk's everybody's cars in the building, but we typically manage every tenant and the cars that they own. So, when they do provide an application, they, they tell us what their cars are, what their license plate numbers are, and we have an eye on the, on the area of where everybody's parking. So, you know, if there is a car that seems to be there every night, you know, we'll probably question it, but yeah.
Would the city sign it in some way that would discourage that kind of thing from happening?
Overnight.
Like, over no overnight parking or something?
We haven't, I mean, we haven't looked into it at this point. It's something we definitely could look into. We'd probably have to speak with our police and, I mean, probably our Public Works team as well, just to verify what could be done in terms of signage.
Okay. Well, I would certainly want to see that, so that if we do have this, if this does go forward, that parking benefits shoppers and diners and, you know, is added to the downtown supply. On the townhouses, I was confused by some of the drawings. Are those buildings connected by something between them? What's going on between them?
Between these two? No, there's, it's green space and landscape.
It's, there's not some kind of a, it almost looked like there was something.
You know what? That's probably, that's the apartment building in the back.
Oh, that's what I'm seeing, the apartment building behind.
Correct.
Okay, because I thought that was strange that they.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. It doesn't look like there's any outdoor space for the residents, maybe the front yards of the townhouses and nothing for other, and I'm not, I'm not talking about the terrace, but I'm grasped. You seem to be planning for a lot of dogs. I was wondering if there was going to be any grass, green areas for that sort of thing.
We do put an area, we would be putting an area on the rooftop as well, a green area. There is a lot of green space in the area, so I'm not sure if we have a dedicated dog park on this, on this property. But yeah, we do provide a green space on the rooftop as well for dogs and pets, and we have cleanup stations along, around the property as well, so hopefully they, they abide and clean up after themselves, too.
And families that you're anticipating the townhouses would have this small front yard? That's all they would have?
That's right, yeah. They're rear-loaded parking garages and a front yard as well. We are setback at twenty feet in the front versus code maximum, or minimum is ten feet, so we are further back than we probably need to be. I think we're about the same as the property to the north. I don't have a view in front of me, but yeah.
And then, the big question, of course, is, is the, the size of the apartment building, the style of it. It's, it's a monolith. It's, it's really large. I appreciate that from the street side, you don't see much of it, and I believe with the slope that it won't be terribly imposing from that side. But I just think in terms of, I mean, I know I use the river path a lot and all the people who are up and down the river all the time or live on the other side or might eventually, you know, glance up and see this, and, and I'm just not sure this is the picture of Geneva's riverfront that we really had in mind, having this really large, single structure. If it was multiple structures, it might be less imposing. It's, it's a terribly imposing structure, and the style of it, it's just kind of stark a little bit, you know? So, it, it doesn't blend in too well at all.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback. This is the size of the building that we were able to, to make feasible for this property. So, you know, unfortunately, this is, unfortunately, we feel it is a beautiful building. It is a little bit more of a modern feel to it, but we have changed it multiple times as well to, to blend more and more into the community. It is a little bit maybe different than what's typically seen around Geneva, but, but it is, in our opinion, a really nice property.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
I have a couple of questions. First, I guess, in looking at the layout of the apartment building, lots and lots of one-bedrooms and studios. So, I was just curious, you were talking about earlier being a family-oriented. How does that, I guess, I'm curious about your thought process about how a one-bedroom or a studio for an affluent person translates to a family environment, like a family-friendly or, you know, kind of.
So, our, our family product would be our townhomes in this development.
Okay.
Our, our one-bedroom, so we've done an extensive study on, on the area. There is a large inventory of two-bedroom units, and there's not a very large inventory of ones and studios. So, you know, young professionals, young couples, we've done these many times, they do prefer the one-bedrooms, and, and they have been very popular in being able to contribute to the community. They are affluent, they are pretty, these are not the cheapest apartments, I'll be honest, so they are.
And what is the, do you have an idea right now of, like, I mean, because to me, you know, seven-hundred-and-eighty square feet seems actually a little small even for a one-bedroom. So, what would that go for as your?
So, they'll, they'll range, depending on, you know, views, location of the building, and so on and so forth, but they would range probably between seventeen-fifty to twenty-one-hundred per, for a one-bedroom.
And then plus parking, and then, and then, so, okay, okay, thank you for that. So, you were talking about, you know, some other of the services that are going to be in the building, a cafe, I think I heard, a dog, a cleaner. So, is that inviting local businesses to participate in, in that way, or is that going to be something that's contained within?
So, the amenities are for our tenants, but we do work a lot with neighboring businesses, restaurants, coffee shops, food trucks, dry cleaners. We invite them into our building. It actually becomes a mutually beneficial relationship with all the neighbors. Our tenants get offers from local businesses. Our tenants are happy that we're giving them deals, and, and these businesses are happy to be, be getting more opportunities to, to speak with local residents. It's worked out well for us. Our tenants are happy when, when they get these offers, and again, the local businesses appreciate the, the more business.
And so, they are entitled to those amenities with the lease, but then they pay for the, for the dry cleaning and all that kind of stuff, correct?
No, no, all the amenities in our, in our building are included in the rent. They're, they're not charged. You know, if they, if we had a local business that did a dry cleaning service, that would be a paid-for service, yes.
Oh, okay. So, that's an additional. But the, the dog washing thing and all that, that's all included in, in what you're talking about? Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify this, just one statement that I read, that more relates to the height, I guess, that anything under the five-story, that you, that you felt like that would not be economically feasible? So, if it was, if the recommendation came back, okay, we like it, okay, maybe not so big, or this is, this is what you?
Unfortunately, due to construction costs, interest rates, and, and the state of the economy, you know, unfortunately, the price of the land is, is very expensive, this is premier location. In order to go down a floor, we'd be losing units, and, and it would not make financial sense for us anymore to pursue this, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, just to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael?
I said a good question. I don't know where you are with your due diligence, but given some of the site operated as industrial or manufacturing, are there any environmental concerns?
There are U S Ts that we did find. There were no environmental concerns from the usage of the property, but there's some storage tanks that we did encounter. The railroad spur did have urban fill, which we're going to have to be doing, obviously, hauling out and filling in with, with clean fill. So, yes, there is a bit of environmental remediation for this.
That include in part of your, your work, you're anticipating formally? Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, ma'am.
Just had a, a couple of questions. Is there any opportunity to go subterranean the parking, to be able to bring the height down?
So, we, and depending on how you define it, our, our first floor is technically underground, you know, when we're looking at it from the back. To go any further would, again, be extremely cost prohibitive, especially considering this is, there's a lot of bedrock in the area. But yeah, that's, that's about as low as we can go with this one.
I noticed in the, your phased construction project schedule, there was a large gap between phase two and phase three. Could you explain why there was that large gap?
Don't have it in front of me. Phase one was demolition, phase two was.
Phase two was utility main improvements, and then phase three was the actual construction of the apartment.
So, we do plan on going in for demolition and site work permits as early as possible. So, let's say we did get approved, our, our first thing is going in for demolition and site work permits, because we have those plans ready to go. Architectural, those are obviously still a work in progress. You know, we are still mod, making modifications as we go, nothing major, but they are not construction drawings. So, what we do plan on doing is completing these drawings, applying for permits for the building. So, we anticipate there's going to be a slight gap, although it may not necessarily be a gap. Some of the work that is in phase one, phase two is probably going to get all the way up to phase three, which is commencing construction. I, I don't remember the dates that we have there, but I hope that.
It wa, it was like the, between, let me see here, fall of, let's see, phase two was August twenty-twenty-four, phase three was fall of twenty-twenty-five, so almost like a full year?
No, that must, that's got to be, that's a tight hole. So, everything is planned to be commencing in, in this year as soon as possible.
Could you talk a little bit more about the finish levels in the units, washer, dryers, dishwasher, and kind of the finishes that are going to be in there?
Sure. So, we have engineered flooring in, in all of our units. Each unit does have a washer and dryer, gas ranges. Each unit does have its own furnace and its own thermostat. They have instant hot water tanks. A little bit more of a modern-ish feel to them. They'll all have large, you know, large, this can be in these units kitchens. They're, they're higher-end. I, I wish I had pictures for you guys of some of our other products that probably, my fault, probably should have included in here, but they, they are pretty high-end units.
I'm assuming for the price point you're at, you're obviously putting the higher-end, cabinetry, quartz counters, that sort of thing?
Yes, quartz counters. We import our, our cabinets actually from Poland. It's a European product. You know, it, it is the luxuries of a, of a high-end home. You know, we come from a home-building background as well, especially my dad's built some quite extravagant homes. So, we do understand what we should be providing for these prices as well.
I think my, my last question, I, I know this sounds kind of silly, but along the, along River Lane, the building seems, is it, are those vents that run along that front of the building for the garage? Is that garage venting there?
These are garage vents with, with windows above. You know, we didn't want windows looking red in the garage, but we also didn't want a bare wall.
Right.
You know, some of them are not going to actually be movers. I don't know which ones in particular are movers, but, you know, we, we wanted to keep a style where it's consistent along that, that front as well.
Any opportunity to relocate? I know that the backside is no-go, but any way to relocate some of those? Just because, in my experience, what's going to happen is in two, three years, the maintenance guy shoveling, dinging them, then the salt, it's going to rust out, and it's going to be such an eyesore for the river.
We can, we can look into those, yeah.
I know that sounds silly, but just, in my experience, those sorts of things make a big difference.
Sure.
Long-term, you know, view of how the property maintains. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yes, John?
Again, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of follow-on. Let's stick with the garage for a second. I noticed there's one point of ingress and egress for the garage, maybe on the northeast corner. Is that typically what we'd see for a structured parking like this? I found myself thinking it would be great if there was a second point of entry, whether the door breaks or there's, there's some issue with it, or would it even be code? I don't know. I'm sure you've designed this to code, but just curious about the one point.
Yeah, we're a little bit limited in here. I, I mean, I wouldn't say it's atypical. We typically do have one entrance for these garages. At one point, we did have two floors of parking, and that had a second garage, obviously, entrance. We are limited in the back, obviously, because we can't access it. On the west is our front entrance. We are essentially stuck with this corner. I hate to say, say that word. You know, we don't want to be offloading in the river lane.
Right.
We felt that it's best to be off-road or Stevens, you know?
The only thing you could flip, the only thing you do is flip the corners.
Right.
You want your corner towards the business district, probably.
Probably over stuff and, to hand some of these questions off.
So, you mentioned fill from the railroad. I'm assuming the railroad is out of this. They've abandoned their easement. They're not involved in cleaning up the fill. That's all I'm getting.
It's, it's on us, unfortunately, yes.
Do the townhome residents, we've talked about amenities, do the townhome residents fully enjoy access to all of the amenities, the bike kitchen, the bocce ball courts, or whatever you want to call them?
Yes, slightly more inconvenient, because they have to walk over, but they do have access to all the amenities.
Which, in looking at the river, there's two lines of utilities above ground, one on each side of the path. Is my understanding that those are going underground?
Let me see if I could, if I could see it in that one.
And then there's three towers that have lines going across the river. I'm assuming those don't, those cannot be touched or mitigated.
I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yep.
This pole, this pole, this pole, this pole, so that's four, five, and six. All those poles will be buried.
Okay.
Overhead lines will be buried, poles will be removed.
Okay.
Going further east, there's a little bit more where we are not, we're not burying those, and burying that tower would be probably more expensive than our entire building, so.
Right. Understood. That's what I thought, that you'd bury the, those parallel to the river, the ones crossing the river.
Right.
They're there. The city has a stated goal of, we don't, we don't have a lot of affordable housing in our city. You stated this is an affluent development, but I'm just curious, what thought did you put into having some affordable component in here, and, and what were the primary reasons you did not include any affordable components in the building?
In the past, we have not been affordable housing developers. The city did not have a requirement, but they did have incentives for us. We did do our math, and unfortunately, incentives were not really enough to offset what we're losing in income. They are a luxury, they are nice to have, but fortunately, it wasn't worth it to us. But, yeah, we, we, our specialty is a luxury development.
Understood.
And that's what we've done in the past.
All right. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
I'd like to say thanks again for the presentation. I enjoyed it. The, I want to just write along with Commissioner Evans' comments. The, I might just write along with Commissioner Evans' comments, the fact that you've got variances dealing with the size of the garage, you know, the footprint of the garage, and the size of the building, the total height of it. I'd be looking for a little bit more on the facade to break it up, break the mass a little bit, get the scaling down a little bit. So from my perspective, that was something I was disappointed in when I saw the plans.
Okay. Yes, Rebecca?
I forgot to ask you, we talked about the price point for the one bedrooms. What, for the family units, the townhomes, what would those, where would those be?
So they're in the four to 5,000 a month range for those tunnels.
For three bedrooms? And they're all three-bedroom?
They are all three-bedroom.
And do they have like elevators and?
No, they don't have elevators. They do have parking garages, of course. They have nicer unfinishedes. They are pretty attractive in our opinion, right?
Yeah.
We feel that, and we would, you know, provide quality in these townhomes as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this point from the commissioners? No? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing portion of the, we'll go upon the order of the sheet. And, yes, ma'am, do you have your hand up?
I thought you were holding a press conference. Are you going to go down the?
I'm going to go down the list. I was going to explain that just for a second. Yes, we'll go down the order that you've signed up, and I apologize in advance, I'm terrible at reading names, so I'm going to put your names. But we'll go down the, we'll go down the list as, in the line, and take them one at a time. Yes, Rebecca?
I was just going to say that some people arrived late, and they may not have been sworn in when you did the initial, I don't know if that's important.
I would just, yeah, you can just say if anybody, I would just remind everybody.
Just remind you that the testimony you're about to give is sworn testimony, and you'll affirm that you're going to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth during your comments. So that's basically all I do it. Okay, so let's get started. First one is Catherine Kornutsky, 10 Ford Street. Yes, Catherine?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Longtime fan, first-time speaker, so please bear with me. But yes, I live in the 10 Ford Street condominium, directly across the street from the proposed project site. And my particular unit faces north and west, which means that whatever gets built on the subject property will quite literally be the view that I see outside my window indefinitely. So I'm very interested in this particular project. I certainly understand wanting a solid return on investment. However, I believe the reason the developer is requesting several variances is because this building is simply too large for the proposed site. For example, variance number one was a building height that's three feet too tall. It was not clear to me if any rooftop, rooftop HVAC equipment would require more than three feet, so just a thought. Also, Ford Street is very narrow as is, and having tall brick buildings on both sides of the street could create a very narrow and cramped visual aesthetic. And the rendering is somewhat misleading, because it makes Ford Street look a little bit larger than it is. So to be clear, my understanding is that Ford Street would not be widened. If I'm wrong, please let me know. And I'm not sure if cars would be able to continue to park on Ford Street, but I think many of us in the room probably know that, you know, when there's cars parked on both sides, that essentially becomes a one-lane road, if not even an alley, it's quite cramped as is. So to add more vehicles to that area would be detrimental, in my opinion. Variance request two is a 13% increase in lot coverage, and request three and four are for 10-foot variance in street yard setback and rear yard setback. Again, just highlighting that this building is simply too large. And I know we've talked about parking, but I have to bring it up again. We have 168 parking spaces that are needed for the apartment. And if I understood the plans and traffic study correctly, the total parking spaces include 124 garage and 46 outdoor spaces, which are for apartment residents, which leaves literally two parking spaces for guests. Now, I know, I personally noticed an increase in traffic when the Park Place community, that's kitty corner to this, was built, and that's a much smaller project than this is. So I'm concerned about 182 new vehicles on one block, plus additional vehicles for guests. In addition, not all the required stormwater detention will be able to be maintained on site, so a fee in lieu is requested for additional stormwater capacity. Again, it just highlights that this project is too large. The plans call for removal of about 75 trees. I know we briefly talked about trees earlier. The trees, they're what I see outside my window today. I love them. And I just have to question the study showing that a number of these trees were in poor condition, because they looked fine today. I saw them out my window. I'm not sure if anyone considered potentially saving at least some of the trees, historic trees maybe, beautiful trees, just a thought. And lastly, the building's modern style, it just doesn't fit with the rest of Geneva's more charming, traditional architecture. And I think the finished product might look more like an alley in Chicago than a charming town on the river. It's a monolith. Zoning limits are put in place, in part to help the city protect property value for its residents. And if residents have been denied zoning variances, then I see no reason why these variances should be approved. In my humble opinion, this building is much too large, and would significantly and negatively impact the area indefinitely. However, it's only economically feasible for the developer if it stays this extra-large size, and so maybe this is just not the right project for this location. Area residents like myself, my neighbors, we are also stakeholders in this project, just like the developer, but we're being asked to compromise in the name of build or profit, which I just can't support. A better example might be to look at the townhomes kitty corner to this development, Park Place is what I'm referencing. I believe that that has roughly 50 units, as opposed to the proposed 126 on this project. I think perhaps fewer units would make the area less dense. Townhomes might be more cohesive with the current mix of homes in the area, could be attractive. And just lastly, whatever happens on this block will change the area forever. I love Geneva, I love my neighborhood, I love my neighbors, and I hope that we could work together to put something on this block that enhances it for everyone. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. I think it's Ken, Ken Craylock, I think, 200 North River, right?
The name is Ken Selick. I live at 200 North River Lane. And curious as to whether or not Benchmark has ever put up any residential structure in a historic district before. I don't know what they've done, but essentially, they're looking to bulldoze the property, except for the one historic home that they want to relocate to the, to their corner. I don't think enough has been said about the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of there. The sole method of ingress and egress, as was pointed out, is on Stevens. And so the vast bulk of people coming in and out of that apartment building will be using the intersection of Stevens and Route 31. And I don't know that there is a sufficient space there. There hasn't been any discussion or talk about our contribution toward modification of that particular intersection because of the increased traffic that would be coming into there. The, I think it needs to continually be emphasized how monolithic this is and how it's going to look. They seem to be focused solely on how it will look from Route 31, and how the, the height of the buildings look from Route 31. But not everybody looks at it from Route 31. And from the river, which many people are out there boating, canoeing, kayaking and such, as well as from the opposite side, where there's, your parks up and down, you know, down the east side of the river. It's a, this structure would be, as was characterized earlier as speaker, very monolithic. Concerned also about the, the vents for the parking. I presume there'd be some fans, sizable fans behind those, that would have to vent accumulated fumes. Those fans are very loud when they, when they run. I was curious, the indoor parking was brought, was brought up, and generally about cost, but not specifically. I'd be interested to know what the specific cost for a parking space would be in the apartment building. And to, to summarize my position as a long-term resident in the, in the area, and living within a half a block of this proposed development, it's too wide, it's too deep, it's too tall, almost 59 feet on River Lane, which is a huge variance from, from what the city allows. It's too dense, 114 units. I believe there's approximately only 30 units in, in Park Place on the same size of a, of a lot as what Benchmark is going to be proposing to build. Bottom line, it's too big, it's 40,000 square feet. It would be significantly by far the largest footprint in a, in the historic district. And it's just too much for the historic district of Geneva. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Rafael Raca, I think it is, 116 Ford Street.
Rafael Rocha.
Of course.
It's also my first time in some of these speeches, so yes, I'm a little nervous. But, well, I'm Rafael Rocha. I own and reside at 116 Ford Street. Together with my partner, we consider ourselves young professionals with a family. We're about to have a baby in around two months, so. Our home is situated in a, in less than a block away from where this proposed project is set to take place. And well, one of the first concerns is the location of the project. Even while it sits on the border of the designated historic area, it's still on that historic designation. From our perspective, the scale of this project seems excessive for the area, and also it does not fit the preservation and the character of the, of the city of Geneva. Typically, buildings in this zone are limited to around three to four stories in height, with maybe a few exceptions. For instance, adjacent apartment building is a combination of three to four-story units, and that leads us to the second concern, that is population density. Again, adjacent to this project are two apartment complexes, one at 200 North River Lane with around 55 units, the other one is at 100 North River Lane with around 39 units, and that totals around 94 units across two square blocks. In contrast, this project plans to develop 126 units within a single square block in a five-story building. The surrounding streets such as First Street already tend to experience congestion during rush hours due to their narrow, single-lane configuration in each direction, right? And, well, increasing the density in this single square by over 15 times, of course, it presents significant challenges, right? I think I listened that there are going to be around 200 parking spots, so, and there was also mentioned that this is a very walkable zone, 74%, I think it was the rating. So, but you know, if you put 200 more cars, well, that's gone, right? And if you add that, that the pedestrian, pedestrian access to the river walk, that is a key attraction for our historic district downtown, will be affected, well, that's also a concern. And while we happen with the river access for the young professionals and the young people that, you know, use that access to the river for, you know, recreation, well, that will be gone as well, right? Then our third concern that is related with what, with that, it reports around environmental factors. The river is an iconic feature of downtown Geneva, and the construction activities and increased population density are directly linked to problems like pollution, waste, and impacts on natural wildlife. I know that there could be mitigation measures that can be implemented, but when we are another, this will be still an undeniable impact on a zone that is designated as historic and iconic. In conclusion, we acknowledge that there is an importance of investment and modern developments, but we also value the preservation of our environment, cultural heritage, and community spirit. In contrast with big cities like Chicago, living in a historic district offers unique benefits, such as a sense of calm, community, cultural identity, that translates directly into quality of life. We just moved two years ago, searching for something like this, right? Young professionals, young family, right? Otherwise, we'll be in Chicago, right? While we appreciate progress, we believe that a project of this scale is just not suitable for the historic district of Geneva. Geneva is more than just its historic center, but we firmly believe that preserving this unique part of our city is vital. If we start displacing and constructing modern developments over what we say that is iconic, and is historic, and things that we are proud about them, and we start displacing them, it's not going to be that iconic anymore, right? And I guess that that's why big projects like these are interested in that, because it's iconic. But you know, if you replace what is iconic, there is nothing that is iconic anymore, right? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. I think it's Anthony?
That's the.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Brendan May?
That's me, I'm with the team.
You're with them? Okay, we're probably with the team now. Prague? Supposed to be, it's 459 North First Street.
That's me.
All right.
Okay, you seem like nice people. So don't take it per.
Excuse me, ma'am. You need to direct your comments to the chair.
I asked them not to take it personally, they seem like nice people.
You still need to address, direct your comments to the chair, not to anybody else.
I got you, okay. A lot of the issues that.
Ma'am, would you just please state your name, sorry, just to make sure we got on the record.
Oh, okay, Kathleen Brockett.
Okay.
I live at 459 North First Street, the block just north of this development.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so a lot of my concerns have been addressed, the density, the height, the traffic, the parking. But I got to talk about the townhomes. I have a three-level townhome that faces First Street. Route 31, First Street, is a really busy street. There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of trucks, a lot of commuters, it's noisy. My bedroom is in the back, much more peaceful. I look out the window, I see the river, I see the mature trees. My garden, I see grass. The 12 townhomes that they're considering would have the noisy front on First Street. But when they look out their back window, they're going to see a five-story apartment building, they won't see the river, they'll see very little green space, and there will be no mature trees. They will basically be looking at a parking lot. Okay, so I'm sure they'll be very luxurious, but then those considerations, I think, would detract from potential renter. And also talking about the space for a front yard, it's really not a front yard. You would never let your child play in the front facing First Street. So I rest my case. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Erin, Erin McCain, I think it is, 218 North First Street.
You can come up as a team, you can come up individually, however you want to do it. I'm, I'm good, just come on up.
We're always together.
Well, congratulations.
I got questions for you guys.
Please just identify yourselves so that.
Brian McCann on 218 First Street. Brian McCann on 218 First Street and my wife Erin.
Erin.
Okay, thank you.
We just had an anniversary. Did you guys ever check on other sites that, what's the name of this group?
Benchmark.
Benchmark? Do you ever go onsite and talk to people? Anybody?
I haven't done so.
Apparently not, huh? Might be a good idea. Did you ever check on the litigation that's pending, former or current, with Benchmark?
Lawsuits.
Lawsuits.
Negligence.
No, just asking.
Okay.
Is anybody here from the Historic Commission? You didn't think to invite them. Did you read their recommendations?
Yes, it's part of our bracket.
Yeah, it's part of their page.
Yeah. Seems to me they're going to be in opposition to this, at least their recommendations. That's all I got.
Going on the traffic, you know, there's the, the factories on West, West Stevens, and, you know, there's a lot of truck traffic. Where we live, you know, sometimes the trucks rattle, they're so big, you know, the semis and stuff that go down 31st. When Route 25 is temporarily closed for repairs, the traffic on Route 31 was unbelievable. I cross Route 31 every day, a couple of days, times a day, so I know. I mean, there were minutes when you were waiting, and I envisioned that the increased traffic from this development is going to be like when Route 25 was temporarily closed, you're just going to have a lot more. And as my wonderful neighbors pointed out, Ford Street is very narrow, you can't park two cars on either side and get through. I, I just think it's, it's a traffic nightmare, it's a density nightmare, and it steals the wonderful character of this lovely town that we moved to six years ago from Chicago. And I, one thing I learned when we were participating in another possible development, a lot of people moved here from Naperville because they, Naperville got overbuilt with very high buildings and it, and it got too dense. I just don't want to see that happen to this beautiful town. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, I think it's David Shepherd, I'm going to say, 117 North Fifth Street.
My name is David Shepherd. I've lived on Fifth Street about 28 years now. I'd like to address parking, a lot of topics bother me, but parking specifically. In the very preliminary sketches that were provided by the development group, and they talked about the vertical parking facing the building on River Street, and the sketches that were provided, and I have not seen updated close-up, and, and I'm hopeful it's been addressed adequately, that they were showing a sidewalk immediately adjacent to the building, and then the parking coming right up to the sidewalk. And so what happens with vertical parking, when you come up there to the sidewalk and the parking goes clear, your car overhangs into the sidewalk. And particularly if you have a vehicle that has backed in on that vertical parking into the front of the building, they're going to be almost touching the building with the rear of the cars, that sidewalk is going to be non-existent. That spacing needs to be addressed. Specifically, I have a problem with the vertical parking on both sides of the street. Vertical parking, and I know there are three or four historical locations within our city where they have not yet converted into angular parking or parallel parking, there's still some vertical parking, but there's no new vertical parking that's been allowed in years. And on public streets, to turn North River Street into vertical parking on both sides, which is clearly for the benefit of the tenants, it is not for the benefit of the people that are using River Park or the neighborhood or going bicycling on the path, it is for the benefit of the tenants, that's the reason that they're doing it. What effectively they are proposing is to turn North River Street, that block, into an additional parking lot. When you have vertical parking, you can't turn in on an angle from just one lane, you block both lanes of traffic. When you're backing out into the street, you block both lanes of traffic. When you pull into one of those vertical parking places, you're using both lanes of traffic. North River is in that location already a narrow street, and so they're proposing to have an extension of their parking is North River Street. It's effectively taking, particularly on the riverside of the roadway, they're taking public parking for the personal benefit of one development. It simply should not be allowed. They talk and very nicely say they would like to provide an extension of River Park. Great, where is the angular parking? If they must, and I'm not saying that no parking should be allowed, but at a minimum on the riverside, put in angular parking so that cars can pull in and out back onto, to River Street. And we all know that River Street, a lot of traffic cuts through on River Street during rush hour, and they come down to Stevens and turn onto Stevens and go north on, on 31, just stand at the corner, try to walk your dog across that corner, and you're waiting for traffic immeasurably. I'd also like to say that I have not seen anything that would address full-sized vehicles, Escalades, vehicles with parking racks on top, four-door pickups. All we need to do is to drive down State Street and the angular parking, and you're weaving around full-sized vehicles that park on angular parking. To me, the vertical parking here and the standard parking, I have not seen anything. They can't put taller vehicles, the large vehicles in the parking garage, they're forcing them to park outside. I understand there's some parking beside, behind the townhouses, I have no idea what the depth of that parking is, but I'm very concerned that, that there is inadequate parking The comments that were made, I'd like to reaffirm also, there would need to be something done on the riverside of the fifth, or River Lane to, to make sure that that didn't become an overnight permanent parking space for development. And they really need to, to consider either adding more parking off-site that is not relying upon converting a public street, public parking on either side of the street into an extension of the personal parking lot to the benefit of a singular development. It's for public usage, it is not turning it over for private development. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Alan Leonard, I think it is, 211 Garfield Street? Nope. 211 Garfield Street. Nope, okay. Lauren Nolan, 205 North First Street.
Yes.
Yes.
205 North First Street. So, I apologize, I didn't know the protocol. Lauren Nolan, 305 North First Street. I'm basically here for the giggles because I am your green light. I don't have something written out. I got my giggles, thank you very much. That house is 167 years old, yes. I, I just want to say that I was here, sitting in the chair that the gentleman with the gray jacket is in, about, I don't know, I think it was like 15 years ago, where you were talking about beautification of that block. And I commented at that time that I lived on that block, it was the only house, that was only the holdout on that block, that wasn't owned by the McConaughey's. So, I, at that time, I was told that there was no need to worry because somebody brought up the fact that they didn't think that you should be trying to push people out. And yes, I said at the time that I was independently poor, and yes, I live in Geneva. So, the fact that you lied to me and said that you weren't trying to push people out of, out of their homes, I, I was hoping I would die in that home and join my husband who died in that home. I will talk to him tonight. I am moving out because Geneva doesn't want me here, and I get that, but shame on Geneva for not wanting to find somebody to turn that bottling company at least, a historic place, maybe not 150 or 67 years old, but doing something with it different than, other than building some atrocity. And there was a time I could see the river from where I live.
Ma'am, ma'am, please, please just address me.
But there's condos, oh yes, that's right, I forgot the protocol.
Please just address me, that's all.
Got it.
Okay.
Just, that's just all I had to say.
Okay.
I'm spewing, I'm done spewing, thank you, Geneva, it's been a blast. 33 years, well, actually more, because I lived at 111 First Street before I moved to 305. So, it's, it's quite a thing.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Daniel Ahora, 115 Ford Street.
Yeah, Daniel Horvath, 115 Ford Street. I took some notes, I was here at the Historic Preservation Meeting too, and mentioned it. I was part of the River Park Development and the situation with the building of the River Lane condos from like 97 to, to, we were done with the park in 2007. The Shodin Corporation seemed to make out okay, working with us to find common ground on the scale, the density, the setbacks, the use of the river itself. The process wasn't always friendly and so on, but there's a way to do this without impacting everybody that's speaking all these topics. It's been done already. Just a couple, made some notes, underneath this building right across the street is underground parking. It's there, it's the same geology, I'm a geologist. I didn't see the geotechnical report, there could be upwards of three or four feet of removable top to engineer a good, solid foundation for the first floor of this building for the parking. As was said, for the condos that are to the north of me, I don't like to dig. Well, that shouldn't be enough, he's in this, they're in the historic district, so we have to, there's, there's different standards here. The rent, we're looking at $3 million a year in revenue. That's just math, you know, there's money here for them. We are talking about a very busy pa, area where I walk every single day, so I do have some skin in the game. It's already a dangerous game to walk across 31 at Stevens, it's only going to become more dangerous. That's actually supposed to be the bike trail, the bike route, there's a sign with nothing really helping us to get from the north or the southeast corner of Stevens and First to the river. It's a dead zone. It could be improved with this development as part of this compromise we hope to reach, I, I saw there's a .15 acre feet of storage somewhere, I don't know if that's a 50,000-gallon tank underground, so the backhoe is going to be there. They've got remediation to do, I'm also a consultant. There's, they're going to be digging, they can do this, they can lower the height of this thing, while they're addressing other points, I believe. It appears that we're going to be walking by a parking garage at the southeast corner of this with windows to look at all the cars, that seems extreme, something can be done there possibly. I didn't even think about the venting, or the louvers, or the one ingress and ingress on one corner for 100-plus cars every day, but then I'm going to be looking at a, at a double-deck parking garage. The people at the River Park are, the condos are that are already there, the community is here, hoping that this can be addressed somehow. And, including the trees, but, I mean, it doesn't, again, to see that whole block wiped out is, seems extreme, and the one, you know, and then the, the house, okay. Finally, we've talked about the width of the streets, we've talked about the cars, we've talked about the taking of public spaces. We haven't talked about the dynamic of this a little bit, and it's just one last point, move-ins and move-outs. When someone moves into the condo or out of the condo on Ford Street, they block the street for four hours, just basically it's blocked. And we don't mind, again, we're all good neighbors, we really are good neighbors, and whoever moves in here is going to love living here. But how many move-in and move-out trucks are going to happen monthly, annually, on these little streets? And is there a plan for it? There needs to be more planning, there needs to be a plan for the intersection of Stevens and First, there needs to be a plan for all these cars, there needs to be a plan for space that, again, these other two developments that we live with and enjoy and appreciate as neighbors, the condo, the townhomes, and the River Lane condos, open space, they privatized it at the, at the Park Place condos, it's in the back, but again, it's there, it's not just concrete and verticality and density. So hopefully we can continue this process. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Kelly, Kelly, can't make up the last name, from our 100 North River Lane, unit 407?
I have a line to speak, sir.
Okay, all right, that's good, we just give you an opportunity. Lisa Wollens, 100 North River Lane, unit 405? Nope, same thing? Okay. Mr. and Mrs. John Stanton, that, that name I can pronounce. Mr. Stanton, Mrs. Stanton. Nope? Okay. Lisa Coffey, 100 North River Lane, unit 108. Is that you? Could you come up?
Good evening, my name's Lisa Coffey and I live at 100 River North.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment on one thing that I think is kind of a common thread here, is the density. I moved in there, I think, October 2022. There's a lot of dogs, a lot of elderly people. Every day, the post, the posted speed limit, because it's a park, is 25 miles an hour. I know myself and some, some other residents of our condo at 100 North have reached out to the police, we had to put a, a little temporary sign out there that measured people's speed to slow down. It's a problem. Last summer, a dog got hit, it was hit and run, the guy took off. I mean, it's, it's already so dense there, and I think it could be dangerous, so I just think adding, it's, the density problem is a big problem. Plus, as I think was stated earlier, people completely cut down River Lane when they're going west on 38 to get to 31. Every night at rush hour, it's packed down there, and I just can't imagine adding that many people. It's, it's upsetting, so, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so, that is everybody on the list, so now I'll just open it up for other folks who want to speak, just please let me know, raise your hand. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to sign up on the list.
Please come forward if you want to.
Jean Gaines, G-A-I-N-E-S, 100 North River Lane, number 208, resident since 1977. Too often, only people against a project come to public hearings. I am here in favor of this property for these reasons. Going back to the late 80s and 90s, this area was a topic of discussion for department, and there were many ideas, some good, some bad. These ideas and many others never made it to the finish line. Now there is a plan ready to move forward in the area that has been neglected. Whether it's this project or another one, I think we need to move forward with some project here. I'm in favor for these reasons. This seems a compatible use with similar units to the north and south of the project. There is a demand for this type of residence... There is a demand for this type of residence, and Geneva should have an inventory, an inventory of options. It is likely this housing will attract younger people, retirees, and empty nesters, so it is unlikely to overwhelm the school district. This project also fulfills the city's goal to bring residential living to the downtown. Geneva is known for its unique downtown and tourism destination, but many communities are investing in their downtowns to create similar districts, so competition for the visitor dollar is fierce. What better way to increase foot traffic than to bring residents to town to shop and to dine in their neighborhood? Our businesses need more foot traffic and local repeat customers. This project offers that opportunity, and there is potential for new sales tax revenue, which goes into the general fund to benefit all of the community. I hope this project moves forward. I know you're going to look at a lot of the details that have been shown tonight, but I hope that we can find a conclusion and move forward in timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Daryl Alderson, ten Ford Street, three zero two. I asked the Planning and Zoning Committee to ask themselves, as they make a very important and historic decision at some point, is this what Geneva citizens now and in the future, looking back, want its riverfront, historic riverfront, to look like, especially in its historic district? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in this matter? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening. I am Al Watts. I'm from Preservation Partners of the Fox Valley. We're at eight Indiana Street in St. Charles. For those of you who are unaware, we are a local nonprofit organization. This is our fiftieth year, actually. We operate some small historic sites around the area, and we also serve as a resource for historic preservation. First thing is regarding this project, I recently spoke to some folks at the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office. They informed me that this project was brought to them, and a review was done by that office indicating that there was, they, they had a finding of adverse effect, that if this project were to move forward, they would want some mitigation for that for the historic district, because that is part of the historic district and, and there'd be a section seven oh seven review that they, they would need to do. And they commented that there would be an adverse effect that would need to be mitigated. The second thing that I noted is that there seems to be a contradiction between the staff report in the P U D and the comments that the Historic Preservation Commission made. So in the staff report, it states in section nine that the exterior architectural elements are complimentary to the area. However, the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission in February said that, well, the scale of the apartment block should be revised to be more complimentary of the adjacent historic neighborhood. So I just wanted to point out that there is, is a contradictory there, so just, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Let us know. Anyone else at all? Okay. I guess not. All right, sir. Come forward and...
All right. I took as many notes as I could, so I apologize if I don't answer every question of concern, but there was a little bit of common questioning here. One of the first questions, actually, if you don't mind, if I could start, there was a question on our, on our, that there's lawsuits against us and, and our, and who we are as people. We are very reputable developers, and we pride ourselves on that, and we've gotten to this point by being that. I assume the one lawsuit that he is referring to is a, is a neighbor who did attempt to sue us and wrongfully accused us of breaking a sewer main, which in fact was actually broken by the city, and, and they, and they admitted it on a neighboring property. That's also all been dismissed, so I, I just would really like to clear a name and any questioning on that. And also thank you for some positive notes. That's, it's also a breath of fresh air once in a while. But again, to address some of the comments, one of the first questions we heard is if there's rooftop units on the roof, you know, would that increase the height of our building? We do have, in, in our building height, five-foot parapets at some points, which should screen most of the rooftop equipment. Yes, we have worked in historical preservation districts before, most recently in the town of Fort Sheridan, where we've not only worked with historical preservation, we've worked with, with the town of Fort Sheridan, with Lake County Forest Reserve, with the City of Highland Park, the City of Lake, Lake Forest, in an effort to meet many demands of historical preservation. So yes, we have been through this process. You know, while we, we do have a large unit count, and we are being compared to some of the neighboring properties, I, I think what, what may be getting missed here is that, yes, we do have a hundred and fourteen units in our apartment building, but again, the average size of those units are significantly less than a lot of our neighboring properties. There's fifty townhome building at Kitty Corn and Ross. I think it's Park Place, and I, I know it's been referenced here a few times. Yes, there's fifty townhomes. I want, I, again, I'm speculating. I don't know the average size of them, but I would guess that they're all over two thousand square feet. So if you really compare in size, you know, our scale is not much larger than some of our neighbors. There is a comment about maybe adding bike access on the corner for the bike route. You know, we're definitely open to suggestions there. You know, that's probably a good idea. There was also comments about angular parking along Riverlane. I actually think that's, that, those are excellent comments. You know, we, we definitely don't want to ruin the through traffic of Riverlane, especially if it's being used every night. I, I think that's something we can look at and, and address. There's comments about move-ins. Typically, our move-ins, our, our garage doors allows for moving trucks and, and move-ins into our garage, so we would have a dedicated space inside of our building. We realize that there's not a lot of moving space around the property, so we'd be enforcing our tenants to move in while they're in the garage, so they wouldn't be parking on the There was a comment on the adverse effect that the state Historic Preservation noted. I think it should be noted that, that, that plan that they reviewed was before we made any changes, and before we met with Historical Preservation and made the changes that maybe we did not address every comment, but we did address some parking and traffic. I'm going to, I'm going to bounce that off to KLOA, to Brendan here really quick, so thank you again for all your time, still.
Hello, everyone. Just sort of some background on me. My name is Brendan May. I'm a senior consultant at KLOA Traffic and Parking Engineering Firm. Firm's been doing business for over twenty-five years in the area. I've been doing it myself for more than ten years. So we conducted a industry-standard traffic study for the area, which included the intersections of First Street with Ford and Stevens, Riverlane with Ford and Stevens, as well as First and Riverlane with State Street. Some of the comments regarding Ford Street being narrow and concerns about Ford Street, as you know, the garage access is oriented on Stevens in proximity to Riverlane. This allows those residents to either use Stevens to go to First Street or use Riverlane to go down to State Street. The only connection to Ford is that shared private drive that connects the rear-loading townhomes with, I believe it's twenty to twenty-four of the outdoor apartment spacing, with majority of the parking either being inside oriented on Riverlane, so we don't expect much traffic at all to use Ford to access this development. Reference on number of parking spaces, the number of parking spaces isn't a direct correlation to the traffic that'd be generated. I know it's been brought up here previously, but the bike score and walk score, access to that riverwalk, twenty-minute walk to the train or to two local bus routes, we've also seen an uptick in work from home, so a lot of these factors are reducing those peak-hour trips that everyone is seeing. So this development isn't going to be, isn't going to be generating a significant amount of traffic that would alter the existing operations of the intersections that we evaluated. The last comment relating to cut-through traffic, some of the traffic volume patterns in our study would indicate that there are some people who are using Riverlane and Stevens mostly to bypass the intersection of First Street with State Street, part of that being there is limited volume and activity currently occurring on that block. So with the inclusion of the on-street parking, providing the access off of Stevens and providing or for traffic, more traffic using the intersection of Stevens and First, it may not be a more convenient option for people, so that sometimes results in a net wash of the amount of traffic, particularly going westbound to First Street. I think that was all the ones that Anthony did not address, but I'm available for any more questions.
Okay. Do you have anything further to say at this point? The applicant? Nope. Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I spoke previously about parking. I'd like to draw attention, there's a lot of discussion about traffic in the area and what's going on. IDOT is in the process currently and has just closed pedestrian crossings at both Hamilton and at Peyton Streets because due to the excess amount of traffic on thirty-one, pedestrians are no longer supposed to, I have seen them walking through the street to cross thirty-one, but they have eliminated cross sidewalks because of the heavy traffic on thirty-one. It is dangerous for pedestrians to be crossing thirty-one. To add two hundred cars a day coming and going from this development that are all going to be using thirty-one because you simply cannot turn from Riverlane left onto State Street with any degree of sanity. And so they will be using thirty-one. There is a significant amount of, of traffic that needs to be considered in, in the total scheme of things.
Thank you, Scott. I would ask... You don't need, you have nothing further for us at this point?
No, we're, we're going to thank you again for letting us...
All right. Thank you. Yes?
I had a question. A gentleman brought up the State Preservation Office review...
Is your mic on, man?
Oh, no, it's not. Thank you. Is there an additional review that is, has to be done at the state level for a project that's in a historic district?
Yeah, so it will be reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Office. I mean, it has been reviewed, as, as the one member of the public stated, but it will need to go through the State Historic Preservation Office.
And how does that affect the approval process? Can they squash the whole thing? Can they require changes? Or are the advisory, how does this work?
That, I'm not an expert on. I would...
So they noted that there's an adverse impact and they're requesting mitigation, so the applicant now needs to resubmit their revisions to the state. And if that's not enough mitigation, they may ask for other, like documentation of the existing buildings. They may ask for buildings to be offered for sale before they're demolished. So it, it, they don't override our local recommendation, but they ask for mitigation if buildings are going to be removed that would have an adverse impact.
Okay. So it's in process?
It's in, right, correct.
All right. Thank you.
To piggyback on Commissioner Evans, so if, if there are things that are required to mitigate the adverse impact and that require, then that results in changes to the P U D plans, then we would be back here at some point?
I, again, I don't think they can, they can override the local land use recommendations. They can ask for documentation, offering buildings to be moved or relocated, but if it did require a change to the plan, then yes, it would have to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Along those lines, I think it's important that if there's any changes to the plans that are being proposed by the developer for further consideration, like significant changes, that we keep the public hearing open.
Yep.
If that's not the applicant's desire, then we can certainly close the, the public hearing and make a recommendation.
I would like to say that in, in principle and in concept, I'm very much in favor of denser housing on that lot, seeing that lot cleaned up and put back into use for the benefit of residents, both on the lot and elsewhere, supporting our downtown businesses and to fully support that kind of a project. I would suggest also that we keep the hearing open because I don't personally feel that the design is where it needs to be yet. Rather not, well, no, I'd rather work with you to get to where we can all be happy.
I would echo those comments. I think, I'm impressed of how close this project and its design...
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry. If, they're just sort of procedural, so we're kind of moving into conversation. So at this point, we, a motion would be appropriate to close the public hearing. However, before you move to close the public hearing, I wanted to ask the applicant if they had any interest in making any revisions to what's being submitted, because if they do, we would keep the public hearing open, and we at least wanted to give you that opportunity. Otherwise, we'd close the public hearing and it would be based on the evidence that's been submitted in the public hearing tonight.
I guess what would constitute as a significant change? You know, we, we are open to minor changes and, and open to discussion on some items, but you know, if it's a matter of making some parking spaces a little bit more accessible, I, I don't know, does that qualify as a significant change to the proposal?
I mean, I, I think that's, that's kind of the election of the commission, too. If you don't feel comfortable making your recommendation until you've seen certain revisions or modifications that you're willing to make. I mean, certainly, you can also impose conditions with your recommendation, like you can recommend approval with a condition that, that ninety-degree parking become sixty-degree parking along Riverlane, or modifications to comply, or a condition that it complies with the, the height of the zoning district in which it's located. But if you want to see those revisions again before you make your recommendation, then I would recommend leaving the public hearing open.
Okay. I guess from our perspective, and I'm probably speaking for most of us, I, I don't think we would be making any significant changes at this point, but that's our position right now.
And I just, I wasn't suggesting one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure, since there were conversations, that you had that opportunity if you were interested in doing that, and we didn't close the public hearing and then move on discussion, and you're, and there was something that you were intending to do. So that's...
Thank you.
So Scott, I think, Scott Vincent...
What, Scott? Yeah. You're looking this way and say, Scott is one of us.
Shouldn't, shouldn't sit next to each other. I think where we were going with some of this commentary was to get, to allow the applicant to maybe gauge the likelihood that some of these issues would or would not be receptive to the commission and allow them to make then a more informed decision on keeping it open or not. And also, are we not allowed to, to say we're not ready to vote tonight and keep the public open?
No, you could make that decision, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure if we were going to move into, and I understand, if you were going to move into discussion, then we should close the public hearing.
Typically after the public hearing.
Yeah. But if there's a sense of there's more that perhaps some conversation should be had in light of what you've heard tonight, that certain, you could just simply make a motion to keep, to continue the public hearing, and then that would be the end of this evening.
Anybody else have anything else to say at this stage? Yes, remember.
I just wanted to say that the majors, I don't know, you can tell me if this...
It's always a gray area, so...
The major sticking pieces for me feel like things that are... The major sticking pieces for me feel like things that are sticking pieces for them as well. So, to leave the, to me, it doesn't, leaving the public hearing open doesn't matter.
And if the committee wasn't sure, there could be a motion to close the public hearing. It could be seconded, and then you could have discussion on that. It'd be an option. And if it was, but if it's both to close, then it's closed.
Yes, Tim.
Given the response of the applicant to council's question, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Am I correct that you are saying at this point, we could have a discussion about whether or not to close it?
The chair can ask if there's any, sorry. The chair can ask if there's any discussion now on the motion on the floor, which is to close the public hearing. That would be germane to that motion.
All right. So, I agree with what Rebecca said. If the applicant is not interested in discussing modifications to the essential structure of the building, then there's not a need to keep it open. If there is that possibility, I'm very open to further discussion.
Yeah. It's still open.
It's still open.
I guess maybe it's a gray area as to what we would or maybe would not be willing to, or open to changing. You know, we might be open to changing some of the aesthetic of the building, but you know, building height, we are restricted, and you know, lot coverage and location of the building, I think, is what we are sort of stuck on. But you know, if there's recommendations, or you know, we are open to some recommendations as far as appearance of the building as well. But I guess, I don't know if that's a gray area, but yeah.
Overall mass of the building and breaking it up into two separate buildings to create some openness, that sounds like that's off the table.
Most likely at this point in this proposal, yeah, that's a significant change that at this point in time, we couldn't entertain at this point.
Michael, did you have something?
Yeah. You know, I think there are a lot of positive things about the proposal that could be maintained, and there may be some things that could be tweaked. So, I, you know, from my perspective, I think there's a reason to potentially continue to look at the project, but I think, again, that's up to the developer, so.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
This is discussion only about closing the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But once we close it, we have to vote this up or down. We can't, other than adding some minor conditions.
And we can't talk to the applicant.
And just to clarify, you would be making a recommendation to city council. It's not a final decision.
Yeah.
Just so everybody is clear.
Can I ask the applicant something now? Can I ask him a question? Okay. Do you feel that from what you've heard tonight, that there are modifications that you can make that will address some of the issues that are concerned here, or no? Or is it something you want time to do or not? We're trying to accommodate your interests as much as we can.
So, as far as the scale or density of the building and building height, it's not, you know, we've actually got, we've gone through many iterations of this plan. This is not the only one that, you know, what you are seeing here is not the only one that has ever been contemplated. As far as the density and scale of this building, you know, it's not necessarily a possibility to reduce unit quantities and shrink down the size of the building. You know, some of those concessions require us to reduce parking or, you know, other concessions as well. So, you know, as far as the density and scale, it's a hard position for us to take, but you know, as feel and recommendations and how to address traffic concerns and parking concerns and aesthetic of the building, we are open to recommendations. Yeah, I suppose maybe we're not necessarily presenting a concept. It is a pretty developed plan at this stage, if that makes sense.
Yes, Tim.
Well, the applicant, having said the same thing three times, I think it's pretty clear. What he's indicating is that if we would find it acceptable for minor revisions, then we should vote the motion down and keep the hearing open. That's not what I'm hearing.
Point of order. If we close the public hearing, we can then have our discussion, and if we want to incorporate some further conditions, such as angular parking and that type of thing, where we can consider that.
Yes. Once the public, yes. But nobody else can.
Correct. I think it's time, yeah. There we got a motion.
Chairman, I can call the question.
Okay. Do we have a...
There was a second. I think Rebecca said.
Anna, call the roll, please.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Mataskiel?
Mataskiel, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
I think that, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, please, ma'am.
I think that the, many of the suggestions which the applicant has indicated he's willing to address and which we could attach as conditions would improve the project quite a bit. However, I still feel like the basic massing of the project is not where it needs to be. So, I don't think conditions can bring it alone, can bring this in line with something I would be comfortable with.
I find myself open to some of the modifications and conditions, such as the angular parking. I am impressed with how closely at least the, the, the design of the project comes with what's in our downtown station area master plan, albeit that had multiple buildings instead of one massive building from the riverfront view. I'm going to have to vote on that, you know, and is that too much density for me or not? The height does not bother me because it meets everything that we've talked about for years in our plan. I think that we get a lot of benefit. We are starving for more rental, good rental properties in this town, and I think that brings it, that brings a good note of that to downtown and a walkable community. So, those are things I like about it. I'm struggling a little bit with the mass and the review from the river, but I'm going to have to figure that out.
Rebecca? The piece that I'm struggling with, I am in favor of rental properties and higher density. I cannot wrap my head around the price point. One-bedroom apartments, that's not studio apartments. That's, those are not affordable, and you do see people leave Geneva, families who can't move to Geneva, can't afford Geneva. And I understand, you know, you want that tax base, you want that walkable, but I feel like to take something instead of nothing because maybe there's nothing else on the table, that's not a concept that makes sense to me. Just take something even though it might not be the right thing. I mean, Geneva is so expensive, and these are apartments, you know, what is a family of three who needs a rental apartment $5,000, $4,000? That, that doesn't make sense to me. And I guess, I appreciate the building and all the amenities, and I, I mean, but it's huge. It's too many units at that price point. That it's prohibitive. It's, you know, so that to me is not necessarily like meeting the need of this community. Rentals, yes, at that price level, no. So...
Yes, Michael.
To follow up on something that John said, you know, I think this project's very consistent with many levels. It meets the zoning comprehensive plan, the downtown plan, the opportunity site. So, it certainly aligns with what the city has been looking for, for this site. Site's certainly been neglected for many years. Some of the variance requests, I think they appear more when they're looked at individually. When you look at this as a PUD, and you look at the overall coverage being only about 65% versus one lot versus the other. So, I think there are certainly some positives. I think that one of the hard things is the definition of density. How do you define it? You know, we have traffic engineers using, using standards to evaluate the traffic impact. The same would be true of stormwater and all. So, I think, I think that's the hard thing for me is defining or getting my arms around what is, what is too dense and what is not too dense. Is it because it appears too dense or appears too massive? Is it the architectural design alone? So, I think, I think it sounds like that's the biggest hurdle, that many of the other things really can be, can be addressed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes?
I agree with Commissioner Slivka and Mead that it's not necessarily the height. It's not necessarily even the number of units. It's the design of this building. The, just the character of it is just too monolithic in the way it's presented. I think it is a design issue more than, more than anything. And changing the design may result in fewer units. I understand that. But that is the reason. It's not, in theory, the number of units. It's just that what can you accommodate with a design that is appropriate for that location?
Yeah, at this site in the historic district.
Right.
Yes. Yes. Tim?
I've been trying to reconcile three competing legitimate interests. One is the developer, who's entitled to make a reasonable return on his investment. That's very speculative these days. When interest rates are 8%, in two years, they were 3% two years ago. I appreciate his candor. He's answered our questions. The second interest is that of the Historic Preservation District. They have some serious concerns about whether we want to take an entire city block and disregard 100 years of history. But I could get past that because of the third interest, which is the city's zoning, both the multifamily portion of it, in particular, the opportunity site number two, which is where this is. And its definition is to change it up a little bit. But this particular project, I think, just goes too far. I share the chairman's concerns and those of the other commissioners that have been put forth here, that the aesthetics of it, more than the size of it, would bother me. It seems very similar to what you see now if you drive down Route 59, which is great, except Route 59 is a major commercial roadway. This is riverfront property. I think the people who don't live there, who were going to pass this in a canoe or on Route 25, have an expectation of something more than standard, modern development. And so, I would encourage the developer to stick with it. I think revisions could be made that would come up with a plan that would win my approval. But as he said, and again, I appreciate candor, the minor items that he is referring to, just don't do it for me.
I agree with a lot of what you have said. I agree that the, the height is not so much my concern. It's what is visible from the river. I don't like the fact that we're going to be looking upon a garage. And the parking, the amount of parking on both sides of River Lane, I think it's just kind of overwhelming. I think when you're going down and walking, I think it's just going to feel like a parking lot because it is a narrow street. So, I think, I think that's, that's my biggest challenge is parking. I know that the economics doesn't work to go underground with it, but I think that would solve a lot of the challenges that everybody has. Maybe some of the parking can come off the street because it's going to go underground. You may even potentially be able to put more units on the first level because you've gone underground with the parking. So, I, that's kind of my perspective on it. I have been in the multifamily industry for over 20 years, so I'm pro-development of apartments. I moved here over 10 years ago and was surprised that there is no quality apartments in downtown, walkable to the train, and I think there is a need for that. So, I agree. I think if there's some way that changes could be made, I think this would be a welcome project to the river.
Do we have specific changes or conditions we want to put on the design aspect of it, such as angular parking and other things?
I think the, I think the angular parking on the building side of River Lane, not as certain as to whether or not there should be parking on the riverside at all, given Adam's discussion, and my feeling that it was, rather than enhancing that area for the public as it is presented to be doing, that it was actually detracting from it. So, I'm not sure about maybe eliminating that, but I'm open on that topic. I'm not sure.
Speaking about that, a question to the city staff. If there's no definitive parking spaces, vertical, angular, parallel or whatnot, there is parking on a river lane, right? Someone could park along the curb?
Yeah, it is. Well, I mean, there's parking to the south.
Parking to the, on the, on the east side of River Lane.
Just on the street?
Yeah.
Is there a street parking? Is it public parking there?
I'm not sure if you can park there now or not.
There's a sign saying you can't.
Whether you would.
I didn't notice in particular, so.
Yeah.
Because if you eliminated that, and there was public parking on the street at the curb, effectively, we would be addressing that concern. We wouldn't have, there'd be no more parking, no less parking than there is already.
Right. Right. But there wouldn't be nearly the quantity they're talking about adding.
Correct. Wouldn't be 22 or whatever.
Right.
That's right along the river, so we should have it as a green area anyways.
Is there anything besides, I mean, we could add that the parking along River, on the east side of River, adjacent to the project, shall be angular?
What does that do for us if we add a stipulation about parking, if we have all these larger issues that I guess?
It doesn't take away any larger issues, but it addresses some of the things that the applicant said they, they would be amenable to addressing.
Would be my understanding, we have to create a motion to vote up or down.
Correct.
So, if we're going to vote on a motion and some folks are going to vote yes.
I gotcha, okay.
Then they need to have these conditions.
Yes, Tim.
Just in response to Commissioner Mead's comment, my fear in doing that is that it somehow misleads the developer to believing you wanted angular parking, here is my plan again, we changed it to annual parking, we're done. That's certainly not what I'm saying. So, unless we intend to create an exhaustive list of conditions, which I'm in no position to do.
No.
I'm not sure we want to go down this path.
And I, and I would agree, and I think that's a fair, a fair point. We potentially, potentially create a false sense of hope and that, oh, we're this close. So, maybe the-
Yes, Michael.
Maybe we should vote on the plan as submitted.
Sorry, John, I thought you were-
Yeah, no, I would agree, some, some of the things that, that are current issues, I don't think we can make a recommendation that necessarily addresses them to, to, to a point of specifically do this, and particularly things like the mass, the mass of the building that's the issue, or the appearance of it, or, I mean, you can address it generally, but, but not, not like you can parking, angle the parking and it's, and it's fine. So, I, I think that's a, a harder, you know, topic for us to, to address in a, in a motion.
No.
We're, we're, our main charge is land use, and is it appropriate and how it affects its neighbors? We, how someone operates the property and how many, the unit, the complexion of the units, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, the price they rent, that's going to be driven by the market, that's not what we're here to, to decide, right? I mean, we're, we're supposed to, is this an appropriate use affecting all the land use standards that we employ as a, as a body?
Yes.
You spent a lot of time crafting a motion, did you?
Yeah, you might.
What's that?
Do you want it?
Well, I'll do it if you don't want it.
Yes, Tim.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just one more comment, and this is directed toward the You've heard the discussion, I hope you understand that we're not wanting you to turn away, that this has been a property that has been need of revitalization for a long time, this city does need more downtown area rental property. And I think, speaking for myself, should this not be approved, and I'm, again, I'm only speaking for myself on that point, that you would sit down with the city again and try and craft something that would address more of the concerns that were raised this evening. That's my kind of. And you can't do it sitting here, that, that I think is unfair to even ask.
Yeah, I would agree, Tim, I think, again, the plan is pretty clear what we want here. We definitely need the apartments in the community in downtown. We've said it in many different hearings, affordability, of course, is another thing we also mention a lot, but definitely having a range of housing downtown is a goal of this commission and this community. So, that is a definite thing that we're always on top of and we always ask for. So, yeah, we are definitely open, and this site is a good location for that, and the plan's clear on that, so.
There's an awful lot to like about this plan, but cobbling it into a PUD that has the various variances and the mass along the west, or the east elevation make it challenging. That's where I have the issue.
I agree.
Do they have further discussion from the commission? Okay. Yes, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make several motions. Let's first say a question for council. Is it appropriate to make motion for the variances are being sought before a motion to approve the PUD? Or should be do the PUD first? I mean, typically we would just do- It just seems to me that the PUD would not be approved unless these zoning issues were met, and these zoning issues can't be met unless, first of all, the variances are granted, right?
Yeah, so the PUD, the PUED is essentially a giant variance, and so you're, what I, what I think I hear you understand, what I think I hear you saying is that you don't believe that based on our elements, and I'm just guessing, that elements five and nine identified in the staff report have been met, and therefore you are moving to recommend that council not approve the, the request for a PUD. And preliminary and final planned unit development, yeah, but we still have the preliminary and final plat of subdivision separate. So, I would-
Yes, and that's what I'm asking, and it's a very long motion, I can just do it in any order that the committee seems fit.
Point of clarification, John.
Point of order, something Scott said, Scott on the left. The, we always make a motion in the positive, though. We're not, we're not making a motion to, to not move forward, we're making a motion, our votes will dictate.
Where you're standing, but you're not adopting-
I thought it was heading a different way.
Yeah, you're not, typically you all, yeah, yes.
Then if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd go ahead, and this is a long motion, so bear with me. I'd make a motion for approval of preliminary and final planned unit development and preliminary and final plat of subdivision pursuant to sections 11-95 and 11-96 of the zoning ordinance to develop 126-unit residential development on 2.1 acres bounded by Stevens Street to the north, Ford Street to the south, North River Lane to the east, and North First Street to the west. This parcel is identified as permanent index numbers 12-03-280-002, 3, 4, 5, and 6, as well as permanent index numbers 12-03-281-001, 4, 5, 6, and 7, subject to the findings of fact by staff and subject to the following conditions. Final engineering shall be approved by the city prior to issuance of a building permit. A final landscape plan shall be approved by the city prior to issuance of a building permit. A revised site lighting and photometric plan shall be approved by the city prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall make a cash contribution to the Geneva School District in the amount of $151,214 at the time of plat recordation unless a letter is secured before city council approval from the Geneva School District agreeing to payment at the time of building permit issuance. The applicant shall make a cash contribution to the Geneva Park District in the amount of $673,299 at the time of plat recordation unless a letter is secured before city council approval from the Geneva Park District agreeing to payment at the time of building permit issuance. And lastly, the applicant shall provide a cash contribution to the City Tree Bank Fund in the amount of $25,151.60 at the time of plat recordation.
Second, Mead.
Please don't ask me to repeat it.
That was awesome.
Mead?
Mead, nay.
Evans?
Evans, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, nay.
Holloman?
Holloman, nay.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, nay.
Moran?
Moran, nay.
Stocking?
Stocking, nay. Matt, goes to council one.
Okay, so we are, the PCC's recommendation is going to go to council on May 13th. I will confirm that with you tomorrow, I will send an email to confirm that, but May 13th is the date we're looking at.
I would say tentatively, we will confirm that date and we will update the Development Projects website accordingly and put out a news blast with the official date, but that is the tentative date.
All right, thanks everyone for participating this evening, appreciate it.
Very, please leave the room for a second, we have a couple more items on the agenda. Okay, all right, let's go ahead. My next-
Item on the agenda is a public comment. So, it's just what we do, leave the, basically it's open mic, if you have something you want to talk to the commission about, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record, provide your public comments.
And I don't think anybody's here to do that unless you gentlemen are here to address the commission on whatever's on your mind, I think you already did that this evening earlier. Okay, so I don't see anyone, so let's move on to the next one, which is other business.
Okay, a couple, a couple updates for the commission.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. If you're, we're still having a meeting, if you all want to leave and talk outside, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, John.
All righty. Couple items for you guys, we got a couple upcoming meetings for the May, month of May. We have the Venture Park application, which if you remember, it came before us in the fall, they withdrew their application, they have resubmitted it to us. That is going to come back to us on May 9th. The applicant has not made any changes to the submission.
That was the next question.
We will provide a staff report, you know, as we normally do, but that we're looking at May 9th for that.
No changes. Why do they come back with the same thing?
From our understanding, I mean, they, they withdrew the application before going to council. I think they want to carry the application through the entire process at this, at this point.
Yeah, the amount of time that had passed since there was no public hearing, we weren't able to continue it to city council without re-advertising and going through the full process again.
Matt, just for an FYI, we'll be here on May 9th. Gotcha.
Matt, same here, I'm sorry, it's my anniversary, so unless I want to-
No Tim, no Adam on May 9th.
Yeah.
Oh, come on.
Does anyone else come in?
Come on, Adam.
She doesn't want to come in?
Great priorities there.
Sounds like you might not be in the condition to vote.
Go figure. Okay, so that's happening on-
So, that'll be our first May meeting, we got a couple out, but we should have a quorum hopefully still. The second meeting in May is May 23rd. We have the Verizon Tower on Randall Road coming to us on that meeting day. If you remember that project, a similar project came before the commission several years ago. This is a slightly modified application, they have moved the tower, the height of the tower is different, and the style of the tower is also different, but that'll be, that'll be on the second May meeting. So, a couple, a couple big projects coming before us. And the last item, I just, just for those meetings, I'll send email reminders as well, but if you could just confirm if you can or cannot be attending, just so we can make sure we have a quorum.
When's the second one?
May 23rd is going to be the second.
I might be out of town on that day.
Is it ever okay to come late?
Like how late?
Well, I'll be honest, I've got, I've taken somebody to Wrigley Field that day, so the game-
Oh.
Baseball decides when it's going to end. Then I come right here, so I could be here at five, five, they are.
For the White Sox, you'll be here.
1:20, it's 1:20.
You might make it, traffic's not bad.
Best, best effort.
That's right, and I would, if I can.
Those are the, the big three items I had, I think, I mean, those two projects obviously are larger projects, we've seen the Venture Park, but I would, I would expect some-
Where's the Verizon site?
Verizon is on Randall, it's 1759 South Randall.
Same as Beavis.
So, it's the same, it's the same site as the last one, but the, the actual location is slightly different in the area of the building.
So, it's the same basic spot, but they moved it.
Shorter and different design.
And the, the balloon test did occur last week.
Yeah, I saw your note.
Thursday, I apologize for not maybe communicating that sooner to you guys. Photos are online if you want to take a look at those, but those are, staff went out and took some photos, so if you couldn't go out, those are available for viewing.
I saw some of those in palm trees out in Tucson, Arizona, and they actually were not bad because the palm trees were the same height as the other palm trees, and it honestly did blend in. If it wasn't for the fact that I spotted it, thought, ah, there's the palm tree type, I, I'm not sure-
How high are they?
I don't know how high they were, but the palm trees, the real ones, were about the same height, so it was in a little grove of maybe four or five trees, and one of them had that stuff on it.
Oh, okay.
And it wasn't too bad, but we don't have palm trees, so it would look funny here.
We do have evergreen, there's one in the south suburbs that's an evergreen, but it's by itself, you have this 124.
Yeah, but it's too tall for our evergreens.
It is, it's a challenge.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Move to adjourn.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, man.